Well, I'm not sure what I would be said. Yeah, I can say a few things.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which stands our nation, our people, liberty and justice for all.
Here is me to vote.
Thank you and call to order the lower Bennett Town Board Supervisor's regular public meeting for Tuesday, April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. The Board of Supervisors did meet in an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of personnel, real estate, and litigation. As we begin, I want to open it up to public comments on any questions or comments on items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone online? Anyone in person? Okay. First up under building and zoning is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty. We would like to, it is the preliminary final development approval for Gwinnett Mercy Academy High School, but we would like to make a motion to table this item for the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion does carry. Mr. Torski? Okay, motion does carry. Next up is the discussion about the purpose of cluster zoning requirements and potential amendments. This item is really just for the board to discuss. One of our supervisors did bring this to the board's attention as a whole. Our engineer has taken the task of identifying those parcels, discussing it, but I think he's looking for feedback and specific direction from the board as a whole as it relates to how we want to move forward. Is that true?
Yeah, that's, that's true. Would you like me to kind of just give a rundown of what we did and where we're at?
And for me, if you can just explain the issue of clusters on it?
Yeah, sure. Alright, so a cluster, cluster zoning, cluster subdivision, it could also be known as an open space development or a conservation design. The main goal is to concentrate the development on a portion of a property and then preserve, you know, another portion of it, whether it's a percentage or it's all the natural features, flood plains, woodlands, whatever, or as many of them as possible. I have example to kind of, that I think drives it home, those, the PDFs I sent you. This is from a model ordinance that Montgomery County put together, so this first one here is, it's essentially a yield plan. It's what we would call something that's by right. They're eighty thousand square foot lots. It's a hundred and sixty acre tract. And as you can see, you know, the developer or, you know, whoever cuts the roads through here and then they create the lots. And pretty much every bit of that one hundred and sixty acres is taken up by a lot that's owned by someone. Roads that are owned by either an HOA or the township or stormwater management features. The alternative, the cluster subdivision is on the next page. That is the same one hundred and sixty acre parcel tracked. And then the lots are the same. So there's sixty-three lots in the first example. There's sixty-three lots in this example. But these lots are smaller. They're more compact. There's not as many roads. And then there is also just a bunch of open space that's preserved in perpetuity. And that's really the benefit. I mean, the developer gets the same amount of lots. They're not really selling the big lots for all that much more than the smaller lots. And they're also saving some cost on the building of the infrastructure. So they have to build less roads, less water distribution, less sewer collection and all that. So the, in the cluster, the lots are smaller, so you would need to have the setbacks be smaller and take all that into consideration. But what we were trying to look at with your zoning is like, you already have cluster provisions in your zoning. So how many, I don't know, there's, I think there's any one hundred and sixty acre residential undeveloped parcels in Lower Gwinnett. What we did look at is, it makes some sense, ten acres or more. So we took a look at like, how many ten acre parcels you have. The other map I think is best.
So Jim, I just question, go back to the last two. So the benefit for the developer is less infrastructure. And therefore they're going to make the same money, let's say, by selling smaller houses on smaller lots, same number of houses, same number of lots, right?
Same number of houses, same number of lots. You could make the case, you could make the case that the houses are not all that much smaller. They just take up more of the lot.
So, so less land. Gotcha.
That's been part of the coverage.
Yeah. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to think of it from the developer's perspective. Why is it a benefit? Yep, yep.
Okay. So, right now, there's six zoning districts that clusters are permitted. So they're all permitted by conditional use. There's minimum of ten, ten percent open space that needs to be preserved in order to qualify for the cluster. But the deal is that there's a cluster district and there's a cluster district dash one, which really consists of two parcels that are already built out with cluster subdivision. So those are not really anything that we looked at in the analysis. So then I took a look at like ten plus acre parcels in the other districts where it's allowed. And there's forty-one of those such properties. But then when you start to take a look at the ownership of those properties, there's a whole slew of them that are already preserved. Some are owned by the Wisconsin Hicken Watershed Association, some are owned by the school district, Gwinnett Mercy University, Gwinnett Mercy Academy, so, and so forth. So that only left nine parcels that were eligible and ten acres or more. Or actually, it left nine parcels that were ten acres or more. There's two, Old York Road and the Durham property that's on Gypsy Hill Road that are in double A and they're bigger than ten acres, but you can't do a cluster in double A, right? Currently with your zoning, yeah.
Can you develop in those? Can they, like, just under our regular zoning?
Under your regular zoning, you could do a by right subdivision in those, but you, there's no cluster permitted by conditional use the way it is in other districts.
Okay.
So then we had six parcels left that were large enough to be considered. And then in districts where clusters are currently permitted. And they're up here in, there's a lot of colors on this map, I realize that, but the purple ones are the ones that we're talking about here. There's this one in the center that's at the corner of Evans and Sunny Town. That's the one that has the under agreement sign out there now. Down here is the Penland Club. And then if you keep scrolling down, there's a behind the YMCA, I think, I think this is the Roman House Paint Farm. Yeah, so that's, that's one of them. And I mean, there's really only, there's only six and some of the larger parcels that like, you know, this is Old York Road Country Club. It's in double A. So not permitted to be clustered. And double A's eighty thousand square foot lots. And it's the country club right now and it's thriving to my knowledge and they've had, you know, they've definitely spent some money on infrastructure recently. So it's not really something I would be overly concerned with.
So the purple ones are all where clusters permitted and they're over ten acres.
Yeah. So I think the next step of this exercise was I had our planners take a look at your current cluster provisions and make some recommendations on maybe what could be changed to kind of facilitate some better clusters in the future because we found ten percent minimum open spaces kind of on the low end of what's required by, you know, other ordinances. So like the recommendation would be to bump that up to twenty-five percent. You could even go forty percent. Like that one that I showed you, the example, like, it's definitely around fifty percent probably preserved. And then also to just kind of take a look at what you as a board would want to get out of it. Are you looking to preserve just open space, any open space? Is there like more, you know, concern about natural features, more, I mean, more concern about trees, that kind of thing? And then kind of cooking into that, those provisions, like the fact that a developer would have to give you a by right plan that could be evaluated before they're approved for their cluster plan so that we can make sure that they're not getting any more lots by clustering. Because at the end of the day, like, you don't want to be giving up density. I don't think the board wants to be giving up density in exchange for the open space, but some places do.
We don't have a lot of open space.
Can I?
They have to give a lot more than we'd like.
Can I ask if in these, these purple lots that we're focusing on here, if the ability to cluster were removed would, and it was just our regular, you know, land development ordinances that apply, would you be, would you have less open space if somebody buys it and wants to develop it?
You'd have, you'd have less, we'd have no dedicated open space that's like protected in perpetuity. But you would have the open space in quotes that exists like between houses on big lots, eighty thousand square foot lots is pretty big.
But there's no other requirement that there be a certain portion of it, you know, dedicated to open space?
No.
As it stands right now, our cluster development, when it talks about open space, it doesn't say contiguous, correct? It just says there has to be ten percent open space. And I think what has come before sometimes is piecemeal open space in different, in different kinds of areas, but as long as it calculates to ten percent. So is that one, I can't see what you wrote. Is that one of the suggestions, is contiguous open space?
I'm sure that a suggestion would be to, if we're going to rewrite an ordinance for, you know, a better, more thoughtful cluster development that, you know, what is and is not acceptable for open spaces provisions that would need to be in there.
And that can be dictated?
Yes.
Jim, I'm sorry, Catherine. What, do we have in Lower Gwinnett now, cluster developments?
Yeah, yeah, you.
Oh, all the grades? Okay.
You have a question?
Oh, I was just going to comment on your, you know, mandating what kind of open space I think, you know, we would want to talk about usable.
Meaningful.
And in my mind, that's, that's the value of this exercise. We don't have much open space left in Lower Gwinnett County. And that's why I asked that we look at this to do what we can with what power we have, which is basically through zoning to preserve it. Which, as far as these purple, these identified cluster potential lots, I think we also should discuss, do we want to have it? You know, the way that the ordinance is written right now, the developer can choose to do the cluster. We can also change it, mandate property owner, developer, whatever, to do a cluster development. So we know we're going to get that open space, which are better.
My only concern with the mandate is going to chill sale property.
Or what if somebody wants to buy it and buy a home with ten acres and not develop it, you know?
I mean, is the, and this is, this is for clarification, like, is the mandate, if the property is sold and I want to just have a single family home with acres, I can do that, correct? As long as I'm not changing or altering the structure, correct?
Yeah, the thought would be, and I don't know, Neil would have to answer whether we can mandate or not, but I think what we would be wanting to do is incentivize enough that a developer would, that came in and bought those properties would want to and wouldn't even think about doing any, any other kind of subdivision. But I don't know if you have to have.
Well, isn't zoning districts C, the gray on here, aren't they cluster developments?
No.
CD and CD dash one are the cluster developments.
Oh, right, okay. I read the legend wrong. So that is, that wasn't a choice in those districts. That was only eligible.
Yeah, I don't, I don't honestly, I wasn't around, around when, when that all went down, but I don't know. It certainly looks like the ordinance was tailored towards those subdivisions.
Specific properties?
I don't, I don't want to say that.
CD one, is CD, I'm sorry, CD the Meadows?
CD is Woodbridge Meadows.
Yeah.
Where's CD one?
Right here.
This one. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
CD is Woodbridge?
Yeah. I don't know which one it is. It's two, the, I can't tell the yellows.
What is the green?
Oh, next to the Wawa.
Those are business districts.
Next to the Wawa?
Oh, okay.
In some respects, some of your MR districts are, you know, they're not called clusters, but they, they are. Guan, Guanair. Gwinnett Hunt, like, I mean, those by nature are they're tight and then there's open space surrounding them. But I, I don't think like, if you, if you pan back up, Jamie.
Those places don't look like slide two.
No, exactly. That's what I was just going to say is like, I don't see, I don't see anything on here that looks like that slide two. So if that's what we're trying to get on these remaining purple parcels, then I think we need to rewrite the ordinance a little bit.
That's probably from some Chester County or Bucks County big arm or something.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. The other presentation I saw was from, from Warrington. I think P SATS did a Warrington presentation and those were larger parcels as well.
Yeah, I mean, what is, 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 is a cluster development with, you know, maybe an increased minimum for the open space? The ten percent, I agree with you that we would want to increase, I would want to increase that. But it, for parcels that are like ten, fifteen, twelve acres, is a cluster development the way to preserve open spaces? Or is there something else that can be done to, you know?
We can buy the conservation easement, that's my thought.
Right, besides the township having to purchase, purchase the property or put an easement on it, you know, is there any kind of zoning? That would be my thought is, is this the best way to zone so that we can preserve a significant chunk of that acreage if someone wants to put it up for sale or is there some other way?
I don't really, I don't know another way to incentivize a developer to preserve land than.
No, wouldn't be, see, that's, but I, I feel like it would be to discourage a developer for wanting to purchase it, maybe.
Okay.
We should maybe hear from a developer on that. It would discourage them or not. We're just speculating at this point, we don't know.
I mean, there's certainly other ways to preserve land than this, but I, those are all like, someone's buying the property. If it's not the township, it's the county open space dollars or, you know, some grant or, you know, I don't, I'm not really
Yeah.
privy to every way you can do that, but someone has to buy it.
Right, right, right.
I think the struggle that I have with the cluster development is, is the amount of density that we're almost prescribing. It does get us some dedicated open space and it's purposeful. But that amount of density, I don't know, I'm not necessarily comfortable with.
Does it, does it?
Well, the goal, the goal would be to have the same amount of houses just concentrated in a different part of the property.
Or not that many houses.
But really, I mean, it's, it's, it's who you want to give the open space, right? I mean, if it's one house on eighty thousand square feet, there's a bunch of open space, plus one house. If there's cluster with a bunch of open space, the homeowners association is going to handle the open space instead of the individual homeowners who have it. It's just how we're doing. I mean, and, and my, like, Gwinnett Hunt and Guanair, those were under the ten percent. I mean, I know, maybe they're not even, maybe they're not even cluster zone, but when I think of those developments, I don't necessarily think, wow, there's a lot of open space. I just think, you know, it's townhouse community.
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, an example of property that is developed next to it, you know, wood.
Yep.
That's a cluster development with twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Oh, like we're Chester?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Isn't the Cutler Development across the street from the AMC Music Theater? Music, AMC Movie Theater? The Cut, I'm not sure.
Oh, that's on three oh nine.
Oh, yeah.
Right across from three three, those are square foot lots. Next to the Hunt Club, right next to, right across from three oh nine.
But, so I'm also looking at these and colored AA, which under our current cluster development is not, are not eligible, be clustered. I know you say that Old York Road Country Club is doing well and whatnot, but, you know, in the event, in the Penling Club, that could have gone under a number of times and you know, the cluster, my, what I'm trying to say is, I just feel like the bigger parcels and we have four of them here, the blush colored ones, they're just vulnerable. And that one AA is between Rushtown and Portingbrook. And that is a beautiful open space area there. There's nothing to stop us from making AA eligible for.
I, I actually, I, I agree with that. And then one of our recommendations is that if you, once you come to whatever you want this cluster to be, I think that like, you would just allow it by conditional use across all of your, like, remaining residential areas. I, I think as you go through your comp plan update with the county and out of that, some sort of zoning map update, like, I think they're going to tell you, you have too many residential zones for being, you know, the square footage of.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask too.
A township that you are.
Should, you know, is this something that's going to be touched on when we do the comp plan? Because I don't know without seeing the bigger picture, what kind of percentage of open space I would recommend besides much more than ten percent? But we'd also want to hear from your point, Mike, the developer, if we made it a fifty percent open space preservation, would that completely discourage any? You know, and then is the, is the owner of the property going to say we're completely devaluing their land by rezoning? So I think we need more.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I, I do think it's worthwhile to have it across all of your residential zones. But at the same time, like with Old York Road in particular, like if, let's say that came under for sale and a developer bought it and it's right now eighty thousand square foot lots. Like no developer is going to put eighty thousand square foot lots there. They're going to come to the board and they're going to say we would like to do some kind of change in zoning here. What do you want to do? And at that point, you're like basically coming up with a cluster zoning in that instance to, maybe it's an overlay, maybe it's, you know, a text amendment, like I don't know what it is, but I just, I, I don't think that someone's just going to buy that and then be like, oh, the zoning says eighty thousand square foot lots, so that's what we're going to do.
So I, I mean, I just, I want to go back to Kathleen because I know that you're the one that kind of brought this to our attention, kind of wanted us to discuss it. Are you comfortable with the idea of us visiting this as our comprehensive plan moves forward? Or is this something you wanted to do separately from the comprehensive plan as it related to just addressing?
I don't think time is of the essence at this point, but I think we have some major vulnerabilities looking at this of losing significant open space. And I know when Warrington, I forget what they called theirs, Conservation Neighborhood District or something like that. They actually had a steering committee where developers did sit on it. And to get that kind of input, you know, so they can maximize their investment, but we still get our open space.
The dedicated open space. I mean, I think it's clear to highlight the idea that we do need to revisit our zoning as it relates to our cluster development, especially as it relates to the amount of open space that we're preserving, but I.
Does it, does it make sense to, probably, probably not, Neil's probably going to say no, but to, if, if we all think ten percent is too little to at least make that change and then you know, and then revisit the bigger picture as we, because the comp plan is going to take a significant amount of time?
Or just to even, kind of to Kat's point, understanding that we're going to review it. I don't want to do anything that's going to be like messy, but if we understand we're going to review it as part of our comp plan and that we potentially would want to extend it to update our cluster development wording and language to include an amount of open space that we all could agree on and extend it to all of our residential districts. So that in the event that something did horrifically happen in a place that had eighty thousand square feet before we finished our comp plan, we didn't have to feel like we were behind in April. And that, that's just a suggestion.
I just don't know how we come up with a number, but I don't. That's something.
I think you have to really like dive into each of these individual lots a little deeper. See what they look like, because there might be areas, you know, where you have you know, a grove of trees that you want to preserve. You don't want those trees going down. I mean, I know our pre ordinance deals with that to a certain extent, but there might be like, open space encompasses a lot, like, you know, visual pleasure trail. We might not necessarily want trails for a specific lot, but that falls under the preserving the environment, at least. I'm just getting a little more specific. But.
Being specific as to if it's passive open space or active open space.
Yeah, then, then I feel like we probably have to wait for the comp plan, right, to do that, that big picture look. Because unfortunately, there, there's there's a lot, there's not much left in terms of open space. And, and I agree, I don't want to see it go away any more than it already has.
So, just to clarify, best practices, we have way too many zoning, residential zoning districts?
I'm no zoning expert, but yes, I, I believe there are too many.
And this just organically came about, I'm assuming?
Well, and most of them are, there's a big A one. We're pretty much built out though.
I mean, that's kind of, yeah.
But yes, I would be in favor of capturing more residential districts under our, under our cluster development.
So as it stands, this is just discussions. We've clearly highlighted that we need to update our cluster development wording specificity and, and move forward with that. Are we as a board okay with understanding that reality and ensuring that it is part of our comprehensive plan review that we revisit it as, as recommendations are coming forward with the comp plan?
And I think we definitely need developer input when we're doing that. I think we have a best on our committee.
Yeah, yeah.
To best incentivize them.
All right. So, thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Next up is the discussion about a proposed update to our traffic impact fee. Going to turn it over to our traffic engineer, Mr. Dixon.
Hello.
Hello.
As you're all aware, one of the things that was planned for in, in two thousand and twenty-three was to do an update to the township's transportation impact fee to reflect current construction costs and help plan for the future in terms of fees that are. uh, current construction costs and help plan for the future in terms of fees that are collected and and having funds available to do um, projects in the future. So, uh, the board um, appointed a advisory committee um, which is required by the municipality's planning code uh, to oversee any update uh, to the township's impact fee. Um, so uh, they were convened and we started the process at the beginning of the year and wanna review uh, where we stand right now and uh, the potential for the township to move forward. So currently, your fee is um, twenty-two hundred and eighty-five dollars per vehicle trip during the afternoon. Um, PM peak hour. Jamie, can you call up the table? Uh, the next one. So this is a table we put together more as an informational item and sort of a reference to compare uh, where Lower Guinan currently stands with its impact fee um, with other municipalities in Montgomery County. This isn't every single municipality and in the county that has an impact fee, but it's most and we feel it's a pretty good um, cross section and it's information um, is up to date as as best uh, we know. So as you can currently see, your fee was adopted in two thousand four and where you compare to others in the county, sort of in the middle of the list right now. Um, one thing to note is if you compare um, your fee and when you adopted it versus the ones above you and their fee and when they adopted, for the most part with a couple of exceptions, um, the municipalities that have adopted fees more recently or updated them uh, more recently um, tend to to have higher fees. So um, right now, Montgomery County, they range anywhere from a little over four thousand dollars uh, per trip down to below two thousand uh, dollars per trip. Um, so the MPC permits the the township to update its fee. There's a couple of different ways it can be updated. The one we planned for this year is an update based on the most current construction cost index and comparing that to when the fee um, was originally adopted. The other type of update is more of a major overhaul, which um, the the current plan is to do that after the comprehensive plan um, is complete. So um, if you compare the construction cost index from December two thousand four from when the uh, township originally adopted its fee to April of this year, um, the index has increased um, a little over seventy-seven uh, percent um, during that time. So if you apply um, that percent increase to all the project costs that were developed back in two thousand four and um, take out one improvement that has been completed um, since then, it was attributable to impact fees. It would result in a new fee of thirty-eight hundred and sixty-five dollars uh, per trip or an increase of uh, nearly sixteen hundred dollars per trip. So it still puts you within the range of what the fees are within Montgomery County. Would move you towards the top of the list, which would be consistent since we would be basing it off of current construction costs where those higher fees are also based off of more um, recent um, construction costs. So we had two meetings with the advisory committee, uh, the most recent one being last week and reviewed uh, this information uh, with them. Um, the advisory committee unanimously made a recommendation uh, to the board to move forward with increasing uh, the fee to this amount. Um, if the township wants to continue moving forward, sort of the general schedule um, we've outlined is uh, coming back in May for an authorization to advertise the amended um, ordinance. Um, we'd be required to get back to the planning commission, which we did last week to give an initial update. We would go back to them in May and then come um, before you um, it's your second meeting um, in June. So um, that's where we stand right now. I also have Brian Jones from our office here tonight. He is one of our senior staff people that does a lot of our uh, impact fee work and you may see him uh, during one or two of those meetings instead of me um, as we continue to take this um, through the process. So with that, I'll, I'll open it to any questions that the board may have.
Any questions from the board? No questions? Brian came out here for nothing? Good to see you, Brian.
Brian also does, Brian also does all your land development reviews. So, um, Brian, Brian does a lot of the work for us here in Lower Guinan.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up is the consideration from amendment to the zoning ordinance, removing permit requirements for campaign signs. Then I'm gonna turn it over to our solicitor.
Thank you. This is a proposed ordinance uh, to amend the zoning code specifically as it relates to signage to eliminate the category of campaign signs. Uh, because in two thousand and fifteen, the Supreme Court decided the Reed versus uh, Township of Gilbert case, which basically says that you have to be content neutral with regard to uh, your sign regulations. So uh, this amendment would bring the code into line with the Reed case. In terms of exhibits, uh, Township Exhibit One would be the proposed ordinance. Township Exhibit Two would be the recommendation of the Montgomery County Planning Commission of April thirteen, two thousand twenty-three. Township Exhibit Three, uh, the minutes of the Lower Guinan Township Planning Commission of April nineteen, twenty twenty-three. And Township Exhibit Four would be the proofs of publication. And I would add that both the Montgomery County Planning Commission and the Township Planning Commission both recommended approval of the ordinance.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Anyone online? We have before us the consideration of the amendment of our zoning ordinance, removing the permit requirements for campaign signs. Um, is there a motion? There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you, Neil. Next up is the approval of the assignment and assumption of Lower Guinan Township subdivision and land or saldo. Um, stormwater facilities, maintenance and operating agreement permits and approvals related to thirteen twenty-three Gypsy Hill Road subdivision. I turn that over to Neil as well.
This property has changed hands a number of times. The original owners of the property signed a land development agreement uh, with the township and a stormwater operations agreement. Every time the property is transferred, the land development agreement and the stormwater agreement need to be assigned to the new owner. And in order for that to take place, those agreements provide that the Board of Supervisors must give consent.
So we have a staff memo and our managers report that kind of, our board report that kind of went through the recommendation to approve the assignment and assumption in the agreement of Lower Guinan Township subdivision and land development agreement of the stormwater facilities, maintenance and operation permits and approvals for thirteen twenty-three Gypsy Hill Road subdivision as described in the attached document. Are there any questions from the board? Any question from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve of the assignment and assumption and all of the additional words that are included in that memo related to the property thirteen twenty-three uh, Gypsy Hill Road subdivision. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you guys so much. Moving on to general business. Next up is the consideration of the appointment of Mimi Gleason as township manager. I think the agreement and the contract have been um, included in our board packet. Um, are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? We have to do it as two separate things.
Yes.
Okay, so first is my pleasure to make a motion for the appointment of Mimi Gleason as Lower Guinan Township Manager. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, next up is the approval of the contract for for Mimi Gleason as Lower Guinan Township Manager. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Again, it is my pleasure to make the motion to approve the contractor, Mimi Gleason as Lower Guinan Township Manager. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Congratulations, Mimi, and welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's quite an honor.
Um, and and Mimi didn't want any of the pomp and circumstance. That's why we're subdued. But it brings us joy.
Michelle's gonna officially swear me in tomorrow.
Next up is the approval of the amended lease agreement with Wells Fargo Bank. I'm gonna turn that over to uh, our solicitor.
Thank you. Uh, as everybody probably knows, there's a Wells Fargo Bank branch on the township property here. Um, Wells Fargo leases that branch from the township. That current lease expires the end of April. Uh, under the amendment to the lease, it would be extended to April thirty, twenty twenty-nine with two and a half percent rental increases every year. There are additional option periods that would come after that five-year period. If all those options were exercised, the lease would go out to twenty thirty-nine. Um, and again, two and a half percent uh, rental increases per year for each of those option years.
We have before us the lease agreement. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? The lease agreement is included in our, in our board packet and memo was provided from our our now township manager. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo lease extension. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up is the authorization for James D. Morrissey Incorporated to utilize the township property located at nine oh one Sandy Town Pike, um, which is the former Texaco Station as a staging area for the Spring House intersection improvement for the duration of the project. The memo was included in our board packet. Are there any questions from the board?
I just have a quick question, Chad. So um, it, the email says for the duration of the job, do we have? It's just this phase of the, when they're working on this phase of the intersection, right? And we have, um, I just want to get like a time estimate.
Yeah, the um, I believe the contract is three hundred calendar days, which takes us into early twenty twenty-four. So um, the area was used as well for phase one of the intersection project. And um, it's a little bit of a unique situation. Typically, contract documents that contractor, it's up to him to find a staging area and we're heard to find a staging area uh, for the project, but we have a unique cir- circumstance here. We have township property um, right at the intersection. So using it provides some efficiencies for them and completing their work.
How do they, they use it under, what are the terms of the? So essentially what I want to know is they're gonna put a plaque exactly where?
Correct. And uh, we discussed with staff and and we decided to present it as more of an informal um, request. We asked them to provide some correspondence and confirmation in that correspondence that they would restore uh, the property to the original state before the project um, started.
What if they don't? So let me ask this question. Will they be holding all of the money at the end of the project or will we be holding some of the money?
There, there'll be a punch list and those type of things before the, before the project's wrapped up. For you, Neil, on.
I believe there's retainer to the contract.
Yeah.
And will the retainage apply to them putting the nine oh one Sandy Town Pike back?
It would. They'd be in violation of the contract.
I don't, I don't want to wind up, I don't want to wind up having to sue Morrissey and rather hold their money and let them sue us. Uh, if if it comes down to a dispute whether they restored the property, I'd want to have something.
Understood.
Yeah.
And do we know when they're gonna move stuff in?
Currently, they just, um, we had a pre-construction meeting two weeks ago. After the meeting, we've given them notice to proceed and executed the contracts. They just submitted a schedule to us today, a more detailed schedule um, to review. Um, currently, um, the first couple items is to have a field meeting with um, Pico and um, the contractor on the tree trimming that'll take place um, for the remainder of the utility relocations. And then the utility relocations will occur and then the construction work will um, commence after that. So right now, they're estimating mid to late May before you see any noticeable activity out there.
What can we limit the size of the MPTs?
That was gonna be my question.
I mean, what, what are, what are we, I mean, two to three pieces of equipment, portage on, MPT, MPT signage. I I don't know.
Or just to a specific area?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just not sure. I know, you know, I I've seen some of their sites. I don't know.
It's right.
So we're not advertising for anything. I don't, I I guess I don't want to feel taken advantage of and I don't want people driving, you know, entering the township and seeing, uh, you know, a huge sign.
So do that, that was gonna be my question. Do we have any control over it? Can we eliminate the idea of MPT signage? I'm sure they'll know that that's their stuff and we're not gonna take their stuff.
Yeah, the, the, the primary reason they want to be able to store some of that there and i- is uh, depending on the work on a day-to-day basis, they may need different signing based on the construction activity that's going on. So they want to be able to quickly you know, mobilize signing out to their um, construction activity.
Not putting signing up to identify that this is James.
I didn't think it was like.
I thought it was like your house is being power washed by MPT.
No, I mean, I, I, I'm sure you'll see their name like on their equipment or things like that, but no, it's not meant, they don't mean advertising.
Feel better about that.
For themselves.
Does the correspondence in Marcy indicate that? Okay, I understand they're gonna put it back where they, they maintain it in understand it's gonna be. Yeah, it's the entry to our.
Right. No, they didn't include any specific language to that, but we can certainly
Let's try to.
Talk to them and ask for some follow-up correspondence. Yeah. Yeah, we can definitely ask them to do that.
And I, I assume we won't be able to park on that like.
That was gonna be my next question.
If, yeah, if we are.
If we do have any activities, maybe at Veterans Park, we've kind of used Texaco as a overfill lot perhaps? So for these three hundred days, we are not allowed to access our own property?
No, we're not. I don't believe we're making that kind of commitment to them. Um, that's something we should closely coordinate though to make sure.
For safety reasons.
For safety and.
Well, that's what I was trying to say. Would they be able to go to another? Can they go back? You know what I'm saying? Can they not be right there at the corner, like hugging the corner? Is there potential to go back or they need to be close to bringing vehicles in and out?
I think we're gonna have to consider at-site, off-limits. So if we have an event, let's say, in first, in Veterans Park. I think we're gonna have to assume, Chief chime in, uh, you know, Fred, whoever chime in. I, that's off limits if they're gonna have their stuff there. One for safety and two, when anybody saying somebody stole their stuff. I mean, I think it has to be off limits.
That's a good point. Like, yeah, we have to be a little, a little careful that um, we don't assume any liability for the things that they're, that they're throwing on there.
But that's the other thing too. I mean, I, I um, but the exchange of letters, the exchange of emails doesn't necessarily provide us with patient. But whatever else we would need to protect ourselves, so I don't, I don't want to use, this strikes me as a definition of an attractive move. Okay, there's not gonna be any fence around it. It's just gonna Okay, there's not gonna be any fence around it. It's just gonna be some trucks and equipment that in the middle of the night, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I don't wanna be responsible. I don't wanna be responsible for their equipment and I don't wanna be responsible for somebody getting hurt who's maybe not a business invitee, but a trespasser. Even trespassers have rights, so I'm, I'm a little concerned about this. I, 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 I'm not comfortable doing this via an exchange of emails. I just think there's holes that we're missing.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with Neil and go back and look at the, the contract documents to see if there's any supplemental things that, um, you know, they need to.
And you, you can put an actual side agreement together. We wanted to see if the board was willing to let them use the property.
Well, I was gonna say, is there any other? I mean, it's not like I, I don't. Is there any other?
Do we have another option?
They did not.
Then there's gotta be, I mean, they're gonna have to find someplace else. So understand there will be a site that looks like this somewhere near the.
But it doesn't have to be the entrance to our township, because that's really my.
But where else would it be?
I mean. Yeah, I don't know what it would be. That's where I want you all to understand. If it's not this property, it's not like you won't see it. They're gonna have to go probably pay somebody else to do this more, which means.
They pay Beacon to use seats. It's off the road. It's pretty close to them. Beacon's not using it. It'd be a benefit to Beacon and be a benefit to Morrissey. The, the, I guess what, I just assumed that this was a standard thing that they're gonna use it, but again, I don't wanna be harping on the same point. It's the entry to the township, you know, and it's.
It's out in the open.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, I think.
And it's accessible to our trails.
Yeah, I mean, it's one thing to, three hundred days of inconvenience in that intersection, which is gonna be a headache for everybody in this village. It's another thing to sort of throw the equipment right there all open like that.
Could we see if like Axe or is that, or what is that, Spring House Estates or Beacon or any of those other larger properties would be willing to house some of this stuff?
If Morrissey can see.
Yeah.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, if the township's not gonna permit them to use this property, then it would be on them to find an alternate property. Some of the points that you raised, you know, depending on how far away they have to go, that, I mean, that could present other inconveniences in terms of them having to transport, um, things um, to get to the job site as well in terms of disruption.
Get passed on to us if they have to pay for some space or no? Have we already?
Okay.
But there was no understanding, um, because there was, there's a precedent in the first phase for using that space as a staging area, so um, there's no implicit, um, understanding that we would let them use that space.
There was nothing in, uh, in the bid documents, no.
How long did they use it before? I don't remember. I mean, was.
I think it was a similar time period. I can't recall exactly.
It was a long time of ugliness on, on that corner during the construction.
I mean, if, i- if they have, if there are other options that are reasonable, I would prefer they at least pursue that. That would be my suggestion. And then if they come back and they say it's just not gonna work, uh, maybe we, you know, I would be willing to consider it, but I'd like to know that other options have been exhausted first. Would be my preference.
Okay.
Any additional comments from the board? Do we have to vote on this?
I don't believe so.
We don't have to vote? Oh, well, that would be my preference as well then.
Okay.
I don't know if, if the public wants to make any comment. But, um, yeah, if, if they could pursue other options first and, and if all of those are exhausted and they need, they absolutely have no other way, then reconsider.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Next up, we have, um, we have before us the award for, for annual milling and paving program. Um, and our staff have recommended James D. Morrissey. We have a, we have a memo from.
It can't be that man of us.
We have a memo, um, from our engineer. They cut through the bid. Uh, it, the total amount is three hundred and ten thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty cents. All of the other bids are included, I believe, in a spreadsheet. Um, Morrissey was the lowest bidder. I don't know if you have any questions for engineer? Anybody from the board? No? Anybody from the public? Okay, so it may just, uh, I don't know if the letter was put up on the screen. I wasn't looking at the screen, but they reviewed six bids submitted, uh, for the preferred, preferred project. All of that was included in, uh, the board packet. So before us, we have consideration of awarding the bid for annual milling and paving program to James D. Morrissey in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty cents. Um, is there a motion?
Don't move.
There's a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the awarding the bid for the ultra-thin bond wearing course as part of the annual paving program to asphalt maintenance solutions in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Again, a memo was provided by our engineer as well as, uh, a spreadsheet that kind of go, went through the base bids. And their cost. Are there any questions from the board?
Why did we only get one bid on that?
I understood that there was just a single bidder.
Yeah, there's.
I didn't think, yeah, I thought there was one person.
There's really only one, one contractor, one or two contractors that, that do this type of work, so it's not uncommon for us to only receive, um, you know, o- one bid from for, for this work.
Yeah, since, since we only have one, um, to, to look at is that you evaluate that that's a reasonable cost?
Yeah, we, we've, uh, we've had a contract with Asphalt Maintenance Solutions for, I mean, at least the last six, seven years, and they have not been what I would consider price gouging at all. The, the price is pretty consistent.
Okay, thanks.
The recommendation from township staff as well as our engineer was to only recommend the items under the base bid at this time. Um, and through that to do the ultra-thin bond wearing course project award to asphalt maintenance. I don't know if you had that little part up, um, but it kind of indicated the amount, units and the price. Um, so the base bid amount would be two hundred and seven thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Up next is, um, property assessment appeal for twelve fifty-two Meeting House Road. I don't know if you, do you wanna give more of a background around that?
Sure. This is a proposed settlement of a tax assessment appeal filed by the owners of twelve fifty-two Meeting House Road. It's a residential property. They were seeking obviously a reduction in their assessment. Um, normally the school district takes the laboring orders and defending assessment appeals. For some reason, they were not a party or chose not to be a party in this proceeding, so the negotiations were left to the county, uh, the board of assessment and the township. Um, this is the proposed settlement. Uh, taxpayer is not getting the reduction, uh, they were originally seeking. Uh, they are getting a reduction in the assessment from one million two hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred dollars to one million thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars, which equates to a fair market value of roughly two million six hundred thousand dollars. They were suggesting the fair market value was closer to two million one hundred thousand dollars. So they clearly did not get everything they wanted, but I do think it is a fair settlement. Uh, the county has approved it and the board of assessment has approved it as well.
So are there any questions? Um, of our solicitor? We, we do have a memo from our township manager kind of going through that. Um, there is a there's one typo, but I don't think that that matters. Um, so we're talking about twelve fifty-two Meeting House Road and we just are authorizing our solicitor to sign the stipulation to settle this property assessment. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? I'm gonna make a motion to authorize our solicitor to sign the stipulation to settle the property assessment appeal for twelve fifty-two Meeting House Road. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the authorization to purchase budgeted police vehicles through Co-Stars. Nono, if you wanna give us an overview, chief?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, these, um, last year during the budget season, we did go over the purchase of two cars. We did budget the amount. This is the, uh, purchase of two twenty-twenty-three Chevy Tahos through Co-Stars, which is, uh, Chapman Ford is the, one of the largest Co-Stars dealers in this area. They would be, uh, who would be purchasing the vehicles from. In addition to that, you'll see there's the upfit, upfitting cost, which is dramatically increased. Um, the equipment inside the vehicles, there's computers, there's new radios. The equipment alone tailors out to one time we're done. It almost costs as much to put all the equipment in it as that does to purchase the vehicle. Uh, these currently are scheduled to be additional vehicles. We did have, uh, an increase in our staff. Uh, we are finding several times where we are, are short of vehicle, uh, where we do not send a car down to the high school. Uh, we've had a couple issues with one of the Tahos, one of the older ones. We've recently put, I think we, I know we put a transmission in it. Uh, we may have put a new engine in it. Um, so breakdowns and other things also cause problems, obviously. Uh, but this request is, uh, to purchase these two vehicles that, uh, are due to be hopefully here by the end of the year, it, with your approval.
I think our memo, um, kind of goes through the cost of the vehicles, uplifting equipment, cameras, the tablets, the radio, our total price a hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and ten dollars.
For two.
For two.
Correct.
Is there any questions from the board?
Uh, yeah, um, you know what I'm gonna ask you, um.
I did.
Well, when are we going to switch our fleet to electric, uh, vehicles?
To be honest, Tessie, I don't see law enforcement vehicles. I don't see it. I don't see it yet, so I don't have an answer for you. Uh, we do not see them anywhere in the country right now due to the demand of time where a patrol vehicle could leave this building and not come back for twenty-four hours and could be running that entire time. And the, the, the current vehicles have two batteries in them to keep all the equipment running. I don't see the technology there to run a vehicle for that length of time under an EV. It's just not there.
Does that mean they're not, uh, available on the market or?
There are, there are not patrol vehicles, marked patrol vehicles that I'm aware of in an electric vehicle. There are staff vehicles. You know, there are Ford and Chevy do sell electric vehicles. I haven't seen them in a law enforcement uh, category. There are, um, the hybrids, the Ford, uh, Explorer Hybrid. That's available. There has not been very good luck with them in, in my regional contacts here. Um, if you drive through the parking lot of Bergy Ford, that's all you'll see is their, uh, police vehicles of the hybrids. Uh, Lower Marine has a vehicle there almost every day.
You mean they're there for repair?
They're there for repairs.
I see.
They're there for repairs. So the, the, the workhorse of, uh, police vehicle today is a Chevy Tahoe. And the demand put on that vehicle, um, you know, a lot of times when we go to sell a vehicle on through Minnesota Bed, everybody will ask what the mileage is. The smart buyers will then say, what are the idle miles? How many hours has that vehicle been idling? And it, it's not uncommon for us to get rid of a Chevy Tahoe with twenty thousand hours of just sitting, running. The, the idle hours are an incredible drain on the vehicle.
Yeah, that, so I understand if, if the vehicles are not available, of course, we can't
Right.
buy them and I understand that, but you know, the facts are, we're gonna have to switch to electric eventually. And so, um, our understanding, the last time you purchased a vehicle was that you would keep your eye out to see if there was a possibility of switching over and so I guess.
They're not available.
We haven't made any progress in the past couple of years. Uh, but, um, thank you for this report and, um, you know, keep your eye out.
Absolutely. And, and, and it, it's easy for us to understand the problem is the hours that the vehicle will be running. You know, uh, I believe a, a battery operated vehicle, what, you get five, six hours? Before it needs to be charged again? And that's under just routine driving. I, I, and I'm not positive about that. I don't, I don't own a motor vehicle.
Yeah, well, the technology is, is bound to improve in the coming years and I just think that we have to make a commitment to switch the fleet as, um, as the cars become available. Um, you know, that's gonna require, uh, strategic thinking about the EV charging stations and so forth in the future, but um, we have made a commitment to RF one hundred and so, um, our fleet is probably a large percentage of our energy uses.
And one of the, if you recall, at the last emergency, um, meeting that we had with the EMS committee, there was, there was one fire truck to date. That's an electric vehicle out in LA. One in the entire country and.
And that might be the source of where technology or the innovation's gonna come from, because California has a promise to transition to no gas-powered vehicles being sold by the year twenty thirty.
Yeah.
So they would have to meaningfully invest in this and make progress. So it might be keeping our eyes on innovation and as it.
And I believe you're gonna see exceptions.
I think so. I, the.
There's gonna be a law enforcement exception.
Yeah, because the infrastructure's not there yet.
There has to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just saw AAA now does have a vehicle that will go out and charge your vehicle if you do get stuck. And it'll give you enough of a charge to get you somewhere.
I did see that on the turnpike.
Yeah. Um, but that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, chief. Any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public or comments? Seeing that we, we have before us the consideration of the purchase of two police vehicles that we did pu- budget for, Chevy Tahoe specifically for a total price of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. Um, should we be that exact? It's, it's exact. There's no gonna be no fluctuation for inflation or anything like that. Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. I'm gonna put a motion to approve. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Um, next up is to, um, approve a resolution or to consider a resolution designating our bank signatories. And the memo was included in our board packet. We, we currently hold two CDs, which will mature this spring. And as they're coming due, um, it appears that all the signatories are no longer signatories. Um, so we need to update the signatories. Um, the finance department and our current manager, um, and the assistant manager and two board members is authorized signers. And those individuals were just updating. So is there, are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public or comments? I'd like to make a motion to approve the corporate authorization resolution authorizing the signatories for Senovis Frank. Am I pronouncing that right? Senovis? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, next up is the receipt of our invoice history. This was included in our board packet. Is there any questions? It's just the one. Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to approve the, the receipt of the invoice history for March two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does carry. Thank you. And next up is the financials, our year to date and our balance sheet. And I think our, our finance director is here. Do you have anything that you want to talk to us about? No? No? Okay. I don't know. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
Or do you have it as Melinda and the other finance staff are putting together the monthly reports, anything that you would like to see as she's developing these different information, categories of information, anything like that? Or just keep doing what you're doing?
Can keep doing what you're doing for now and they tweak it along the way. Yeah.
Okay. My idea, I did appreciate the highlight and that, that finance memo. I did appreciate that addition.
That's helpful.
Muni's report is hard to digest. I don't know. I don't know how everyone feels. So is there, if there is any benefits, I guess this is the time to, to kind of absorb the way that the information is being delivered to us currently. And if we have recommendations to the finance department, Linda is open to hearing how we would like to receive the information or how best it could be organized. There's no other questions from the board. Next up is the minutes from our April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review?
Yes.
Are there any questions, comments, concerns? On feedback? No? Okay, with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes from our April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does carry. Next up is the update of our township commissions and boards and subcommittees from the supervisor liaison. I don't know who wants to go first. EAC had a meeting. Mike or Tessie, do you guys want to talk about the EAC?
Want me to do it, Tessie, or do you want to do it?
You can.
Okay. There were a number of different things that were discussed, including how to deal with the fee in lieu for tree waivers. Good conversation around that about long-term planning for environmental related projects. There are a number of upcoming events, including the Ambler Earth Fest and the Wissahicken Creek Cleanup on April twenty-ninth. Composting workshop on May twentieth. Tree giveaways planned for October. There was some talk about consideration of a mountain bike trail in Penland Woods. I don't think that's really fully baked out yet, but it's in some initial discussions on that. And then there was some discussion about increasing the native tree requirement, which is currently seventy-five percent. Think that was largely the bulk of the meeting. Did I miss anything, Tess?
No, I'm sorry. I forgot my notes, but I, I think best of my memory, that was it. There's going to be some follow-up discussion on the in lieu of fee. The committee wants to do some blue sky thinking of long-term strategy for that potential income to the township. That's all.
The May twentieth composting workshop is open to the public?
Yep.
In the Penland Woods?
I, I don't know if the location was decided. I didn't know that location.
Okay. Some is still to be on the That's what I was going to say. It should be on there. Okay. Very good. I know that the HRC did postpone their meeting. I think a number of members were out of town. But there is an update from the HRC, the Human Relations Commission. And I just wanted to share with the public at large, one of the HRC members, Jimmy Chong, is going to be featured in the May speaker series with Channel Six ABC News anchor, Nidya Han, on the, on the topic of Asian and anti-Asian hate, then and now. It's going to be an online event, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, from seven to nine. So there's a link and you can participate in this from home. Historic Committee did meet. I, I didn't know if you wanted to update on the Historic Committee?
They did. Covered a lot. There was a presentation on Penland Village. Gori Jones brought in all of her, a lot of her, you know, posters and she's got so many like original documents that we have to get like scanned and, and, and preserved in photographs and everything. It was really interesting. And the committee talked a lot about, you know, we've talked a lot about the historical markers program and, and making a recommendation to the board with respect to Penland. In addition to, you know, the markers that have been raised. They also talked about looking into making Penland a, an honorary historic district. And so it's non-regulatory. There's no zoning. You know, regulations or restrictions on the homeowners or any imposition on or changes. In terms of regulation, it's more of an honorary thing that, that the state offers and you can, they're going to look more into it that with the historical society, but there's a lot of documentation that you can provide. And then it can all be kind of catalogued and preserved in one space to sort of honor the history of that community before it, because it's changed so much over the years and presumably will continue to change. So they talked about the benefits, the pros and cons for that, but they're still in the very preliminary stages of looking into that. They did, and it will, it will be passed along to the board. But they, they are making a recommendation with respect to marker, a historical markers program, which I know has been talked about a lot at the, at the public meeting level as well. They've created, you know, procedures that are sort of similar to the state's program, which has been paused and there's no indication if or when it will resume. So it may be that more municipalities are going to take this up on their own. And so that, that will come before us to look at that, but it's a great way to sort of have the community give input on what they think, you know, should be honored here in Lower Gwinnett in terms of preserving our, our history even for, you know, things that might not be standing anymore. They also discussed the Gwinnett School, which is the McCormick House on the Ingersoll property. And, you know, we visited the history of, of that schoolhouse being one of the four or five one-room schoolhouses in the township. And just sort of are, are planning to make a recommendation to the board if, if there is some renovation done to that building or as we're, you know, renovating the park. There, you know, they have a couple of recommendations how we can document the, the history of that, of that building and maybe incorporate, you know, some of those features and whatever the park's strategic plan recommends. I think that's it for historic. It was two and a half hours. They're very, they, they are, they, I mean, there's just so much on their plate, but they're doing an awesome job. Very dedicated volunteers. Parks and Rec didn't meet. But I, I did want to report on, we did a trail cleanup on Earth Day. Picked up a lot of trash and had a lot of fun while we were doing it. So I think those are great events. And so I brought my kids. It's fun to get them. They love picking up trash, man. So any, any way I can sanction them picking up trash and the gloves and yeah, they, they love it. They love it. But I think that that's, that's all to report on the committee.
I don't, was there any other meeting, any other committee meeting? No?
No, EMS. Matt.
Oh, EMS.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, the fire, two fire companies and our ambulance company gave us an update of their first quarter activity and there was no unusual increase of the activity compared to previous year and maybe a little bit slower for some reason that was not explainable. But we went over some expenses that have been incurred. The Wissahicken company had to replace all of their packs, which are, that's the equipment that the firefighters are required to wear, which is for safety and all the packs have to be updated at the same time. And that was two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in addition to some other costs that are associated with that. And then a, an order has been placed for a new ladder truck for one point seventy-five million dollars. And the lead time for getting that is a few years, so it won't be delivered till twenty twenty-five. So they didn't have to put any money down to place the order. And this leaves them a few years to understand their budgeting process to pay for this equipment. So one of the major points of discussion, which has been going on with the EMS for the, this year, if not before, is to understand how our township, in addition to the other borough and townships that are supported by the two companies, how can we better support them with monetary resources? And so our township is doing an evaluation of their budgets, you know, inflow, cash in and out to see exactly what their budget situation is. They understand their budgets, but that has to be conveyed to us. And so that's going to allow us to better understand if we need to increase our contribution to them going forward and how we can pay, you know, contribute when big pieces of equipment like the fire truck are needed. And we just did want to reiterate to the public that our fire companies are both completely volunteer. So and there is a concern that going forward, the price of equipment needed by the fire companies is so very expensive now that they cannot just stand on the corner with a bucket and ask for donations. It, it's just much more money that needs to be raised to support these companies. So we are very, very fortunate to have both of these companies as well as our ambulance company. And we just need to understand that the, the, you know, it's not an inexpensive ordeal to maintain these companies going forward. So I believe that was the, the, well, there was a little bit of talk about improvement to the addresses within Folkways to allow better finding of, you know, emergency addresses. So that's going to be updated. That's that's about it, I think.
Thank you. I just said real quick that we're getting to the endpoint of the tax credits that we talked about as a board, human incentivizes the volunteers. Just waiting some more, from more additional information for Mimi so it can be incorporated into the resolution that hopefully will come before us. One of our main meetings, I guess, maybe that second one. So we'll be wrapping up that. But yeah, Tessie, you have a good summary. Good meeting.
Thanks. Yeah, it was.
Thank you. Um, staff updates. Our municipal project, I know that Bethelm Pike Pedestrian Improvement is specifically on
Thank you. So as the board's aware, the Bethelm Pike Pedestrian Improvement Project is to install two pedestrian bridges over the creek. One just north of Bergy's and then the other one just south of Locust Lane. And so the project's funded in part by two grants from Monco twenty forty. The township recently requested an extension for the grant and, and were granted that extension until the middle of next year. Jamie, is that right? June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So we're working to finalize the, the, the bridge designs are finalized. We need to acquire some temporary construction easements from three property owners in order for the crane to be able to be set to lift the bridges off of the, the truck when they come and, and, and put them into place. So Jamie will be reaching out to those property owners. We're going to try to set up meetings with them so that we can get those easements in place. Once those easements are moving in a positive direction, we can get a final quote from contact. They're the bridge manufacturer. They're on, on Co-Stars. And those bridges can begin to be fabricated and then we can bid the installation of, of the bridges and meet the, the timeframe of, of the grant. So any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
That was what I was going to ask. So do we think with all the additional steps that still need to be taken, we'll still meet the timeline of this middle of next year?
Yeah, yeah. Our, our goal is to put the bridges in place towards the end of this year. And then the contractor can finish any cleanup the beginning of next year, spring, and, and, and have it all be done by, by June for sure.
Awesome.
Have we seen any pictures of what these are going to look like?
Do you know the one that's on Welsh Road?
On where? I'm sorry.
Welsh Road by Johnson, by Johnson and Johnson. There's a, there's a pump station on the corner. I, I want to say it's Land Fair is, is the, the street where it connects to Welsh Road. So if you want to go take a look at that one, that will look almost exactly the same.
Does it look like the ones on Penland Pike too? The Penland Pike Trail?
Probably bigger than that though. Yeah, bigger than that.
I'm not aware of those specific bridges. These are, these are steel bridges.
Oh, they're steel.
Yeah. And it's going to, it'll be steel truss structure on the outsides and then a poured concrete floor.
Oh, then that, I, I don't think
Poured concrete deck.
Yeah.
Not, not to question your judgment, but were we not allowed to discuss before these were purchased, what we were getting?
They have not been purchased yet. And we can, if you would like to see renderings before we could certainly bring, bring them to you. I mean, we would be asking the, Mimi, we would be asking the board to purchase a few hundred thousand dollars worth of bridges for certain. So it will be back in front of you.
Okay. I, I would just like to know what the choices are, that if they're similar to the ones along Penland Pike, which I'm familiar with. That would be good, but I'd just like to see what it is.
Okay. If you have time to drive by the one on Welsh Road, Welsh and Land Fair.
Yeah, I have a photo of it. I can send out to everybody.
Okay.
Sure.
Taking those trails to nowhere, go somewhere.
This is a
This is going to be awesome.
Yeah, a good connection to get sidewalk past this obstruction that is the creek. Yes.
Yeah, I know that there are many places in the township that don't have sidewalks, but I, I can't tell you the number of times when people are walking just on the street because there is no sidewalk. And this can, you know, this is a, that's a dangerous situation because if two cars are coming And um, this can, you know, this is a, that's a dangerous situation because if two cars are coming, it's hard. There's no shoulder. It's hard to pull off. So anytime we can increase sidewalks, I I or trails, the equivalent, I guess, it's it's really a good thing, I think. Um, so I'm glad to hear this is going forward.
Are any other staff updates?
Ambler Yards uh, submitted their uh, request for approval to hold their food truck events. Again, um, they're required by the Township Conditional Use Approval to do that. So um, the Police Department has had um, quite a bit of um, contact with residents, somebody who I believe is in the meeting tonight, uh, as well as an an Officer Henry would and through, so Kathy, I want to thank you for all the um you know, coordinating you were doing to get the information out to your neighborhood so we could get input back from your neighborhood and you know, kind of understand the concerns. And then Officer Henry was meeting with um, the owners, the property managers out there too. So um, I issued the
Very welcome.
So I I I had issued the approval. They have agreed and obviously the the biggest concern was parking. So um, they've agreed they're going to help the work with the Police Department and Public Works Department to make sure we get no parking signs on one side of Brookside Avenue on the nights that they have events. They're happening on the third Fridays from beginning May nineteenth, except there's one Saturday at the end. Um, I forget exactly that date. But then also they've they've drawn up maps that they're going to be handing out to people, especially as their parking lot gets full of where they can park to try to discourage people from uh, looking, you know, if they're looking for overflow parking basically, so they're not looking into the neighborhood. So hopefully that will help keep people off the street as much as possible. See how this works.
Thank you. Are there any other staff updates? And before we go to supervisor updates, I realized that I forgot to give my updates during the meeting. I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention as as we're coming to a a different season, the spring season. Um, I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that our township does have a policy that we are not allowing um, signs of any kind on township property. Um, there's been some questions and there's been some confusion. I just want to make it clear that this is a longstanding policy. Um, if by chance you put a sign up on township property and then you believe it was stolen or misplaced, um, contact the township or township staff will be able to help you locate your sign. But just to ensure that everyone understands, if you have any additional questions, um, you can reach out to our township staff and we're going to ensure that this but the clarity and to make sure that everyone has access to this information, it's not catching them off guard. It'll be up on our website, but just to be clear, it is a longstanding policy. I guess we can move right towards uh, supervisor comments, Tessie?
Uh, no comments.
Kathleen?
I have nothing. Thank you. All right. Jeanne?
Nothing.
All right.
Happy that the interim tag has been removed.
Yeah. Um, I I just wanted to bring, I guess, some events that I know that are on our website, but I want to bring them to people's attention just to mark your calendars and save the date kind of thing. We'll be celebrating Juneteenth um, in conjunction with Ambler as we did last year in June. I believe it'll be the sixteenth seventeenth. But look for our website to get the updated information. Um, also, just to save the date, we're going to be raising the flag, um, pride flag on June first in the evening, probably at six PM. So just look out for our website for additional information about that. And I'm very glad and and pleased to know that the interim tag is gone. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
A second, but I do have a question. So remember last year, uh, our um Attorney General said that when he became governor, he would come back.
We do have that
Has the invitation been extended?
I think he said he would be signing
He said what he's done in something on Human Rights Act. Yeah. And so that is in committee now? Yeah. Uh, and it is being voted on by the General Assembly? We do have it recorded to maybe bring to his attention.
Yeah.
So we'll see how that works out.
I I do have the recording still.
Yeah.
I don't think we'll let him off the hunkets.
No, we will not.
Um, so was there a second to adjourn?
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Who's helping me sign these checks?